Got it. Sorry.
Anderson, I can't quite read the first name, I'm sorry. Dennis, Dennis Anderson. Let me come up with that. I can. This one? Yes. Thank you. I was reading the minutes, I kind of followed the minutes as been up. London-Sutherland for a long time. And with the Hastings Village update last month, it stated that there would be some property, potentially property purchased for a new village per se. And I was just wondering from the council if that property has been purchased yet or at this time? Or in the process of being purchased?
Sure, yeah, there will be, can you hear me okay? The plan isn't to purchase more property for the homeless. Where it is, it's where it's going to be. The intent is to find low-income housing for people that complete their program of work and qualify for housing. And to provide an inventory of low-income housing across the board for the community. And so those are the properties we're looking at with Unquahart, the county, and some of the other agencies that building either a tiny home village or a cluster of homes, but homeless per se will not, there'll be no homeless camp on any other site than where it is. In fact, Wayne will be here tonight to talk about how we're in process of adding services there and putting 24-hour security at that site to ensure more long-term public safety. I will tell you all, the original intent was to partner with the county and the other cities to move forward with creating a regional facility in Roseburg. And that still is only a agenda in our plan. The problem is, we're the only city in Douglas County and mostly Southern Oregon who decided we aren't going to allow homeless people to sleep in our public rights of what, rights of way. We didn't want them sleeping in Central Park or on people's businesses and doing that. So the law said that we had, if we had to allow them to sleep in Central Park or any public right-of-way, unless we provided an alternative. So that's how Hastings Village came up. We immediately opened up Hastings Village and immediately took all the homeless people, you don't see them around town, on, on, on the streets, sleeping at nights or taking over anything. And what we've been able to do is cluster them on one site. And in doing that, we've also got them in those that want care, either for mental health, drug or alcohol, or some just simply job training. They're in what we call a program of care, getting help. Those that don't want that and want to continue that lifestyle, that's why Hastings Village is for good luck, enjoy your tent. But the problem is, since we're the only one, none of the other cities have caught up with this. So the regional, the original plan for a regional center isn't even on their minds, even Roseburg even now still, shoveling people from one, you know, homeless camp in the public right-of-way and public view on a regular basis. And that's a game the other communities choose to play. We're not doing it that way. So unfortunately, we are left with the burden of keeping this longer than we originally anticipated because the other communities haven't even caught up with us. But we're finally at a point where Mercury and Widening, the state and Oregon Mayor's Association actually see what we're doing. We're so far ahead of the curve of what other cities have done because we started immediately. Certainly, we've made all our mistakes along the way, trust me. I hear about them and that's just, I'm a city manager and suddenly the council and staff have been responsible now, like addressing the homeless problem in our community. It's a bit overwhelming, but it's certainly a lot better here than any other area. And I want to keep it that way. We want to keep it that way. But at the same time, one of the commitments we made is these people, I'm sorry to go on so long now, but I think it's important to explain on the record. We want to keep these people at Hastings Village where there's going to be security. We've got care providers that'll come by there and help provide care and support for them. And those that truly want to come out of that environment, we're creating a step system for them to do it to where at some point they will be eligible for independent living on their own. And the tiny home village concept is only at one twentieth of the agenda we have in terms of trying to create reasonable low-income housing for other people. Because if you stick around tonight, you'll find out there are literally hundreds of people this close to being where they are. And we want to circumvent it by creating avenues and menus and venues of lower-income housing for them to be able to live. So with that, I'll stop my, my pastoralship and return to you. Oh, yeah. We actually haven't spent really any specific general fund monies on this. We received some ARPA funds, some CARES Act money. And then Unquahart, which is the 501(c)(3) that we helped create, is a Roseburg Sutherland nonprofit entity that has the county homeless people on it and the caregivers in that group. They are the nonprofit that we contract with and have turned the facilities and the ongoing management over to them. Since, like I said earlier, it's not our area of expertise.
So I just have one more question. I had heard that property at the end of Hawthorne had been purchased.
No, but we, we, we are actually, we have been looking at it and we're working with partners using that as a tiny home village with the care center. And in fact, our store, Council Smalley here, he lives over in that area. The only thing that we're hoping to do is we were working with the owners that own that tiny U trailer park. It's on the north end of that neighborhood. Oh, Twin Pines. I did it, man. So our intent is to take possession of that and clean it up and make it a tiny home village as well. And so, but we can't do one without the other. The law says that if I, we use urban renewal monies and that's what we're going to use, urban renewal monies. That if we take over a abided area, the people that we dislodge from that abided area, we have to provide an alternative for them. So the primary generator for getting that and putting a tiny home village will be to clear that property, but offer, they don't have to take it, that's their choice. A tiny home. And it, it'll be engineered, designed, it'll be professionally managed. That'll be part of the requirement. There'd be a community center based there for the whole community to use in some shape or form. We're working with other nonprofits for that. But I talked to a gentleman today who was so nice. Is Bob, are you here? I think his name was Bob or Bill? I'm sorry, I started with a B. He was so nice and he told me he was going to be here. I just wanted to let you know too, our long-term plan is to take Duke Street all the way through that field with curb gutter sidewalk all the way over to Hastings and Taylor, so that there is a decent access, secondary access from Comstock to the other side of town. Of course, that's long-term, but that's kind of the plan. And we don't know if we get money, we have monies, last but not least. We have applied for grant monies, the city has, and Unquahart has already received about $600,000. But we've applied through the Oregon State Legislature for 1.3 million. We met with Mercury and Widen staff two weeks ago and they got our 1.6 million dollar application in to the, is it Ways and Means, is Pat here? Okay, so they got that in. They told me Wyden was here last week and his staff told me, ah, we got that in. So it's in the pipeline for getting funded. And then the Oregon Mayor's Association invited us to partner with them and apply to the Oregon Legislature for another 1.3 million and an annual $358,000 a year supporting the 24-hour and the facility care of that. So we have all those monies in the pipeline coming. And with receipt of one of those, our intent would be to buy that property and turn it into a value-added benefit for the whole community over it with some level. And the other thing I will tell you, that when we get to doing this, we'll invite you all to this table to have a say-so and how you'd like us to proceed. We aren't going to just do it without your involvement.
So that was my next question. For folks who live, I, I raised my kids and I have grandkids now in that area. And I have huge concerns with this as do my family. And so it concerns me that this is just moving ahead without any kind of public input.
It won't, we will do the public input. But specifically with you, we'll call you in just like this. Bring in people and we'll talk about it. If it isn't, at the end of the day, a viable option, we'll go someplace else. So it's not sealed in stone or it's not them deal.
Yeah.
Keep in mind also that it's a step over them to get up to the tiny house. They don't do it like from the tent. They're a step program that they have to go through and qualify.
It still is a large concern.
And legitimately so, there's some people over there that are so broken, I don't know. You know, I mean, they come to Council every now and then and, and you know. But if that's the case, they won't be going into any facility that we would build.
There's a lot of stuff in the area and we're already going, just with the folks from Hastings, where my grandchildren can't even go out and play. And so that's not, that's not okay.
Well, if that ever happens, if you get in a position, our chief is back here and we got police officers here. They can give you a number for you to call and we'll respond immediately. Is that, that's not acceptable.
Thank you. Presentation, employee recognition, please change.
Mayor Council, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge one of my officers, Officer Kyle Nelson. Going to come up real quick, seeing with your eyes on him.
Look at those stripes.
Sometimes I don't get to introduce my officers in the public view, so it's, it's nice to bring them in once in a while. I just want to take a minute to kind of let you know, we have a master police officer program that seeks to recognize those officers that have demonstrated they possess the character, the skill set, the dedication to service to their organization and community to merit the status of master police officer. On March 16th, 2023, Officer Kyle Nelson accomplished his arduous task and was recognized for his achievement and achieving master officer status within the police department. It takes a long time to get this. He has to be an instructor. He's currently a firearms instructor, an armor, a field training officer. And he's earned his basic, intermediate, and advanced police certificates through the Oregon Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. So I just want to take a minute to congratulate him on that. And now he'll learn the master officer patches as you see. And it's not, it's not a small deal to, to get to that, to get to this point. So I just wanted to congratulate you. Thank you.
Next one is Stephanie Barkey.
Slade or recognition to give one of your group or term of service? Hey, I'm sorry to wake you up, Chief.
This is for you, five years of service, Dennis, you. Appreciate your fire, five years of dedication to the Sutherland Fire Department.
Now you go back to sleep.
Line of concern agenda, minutes for March 13th, 2023, regular meeting. And, and minutes for March 23rd, 2023 workshop meeting. Motion and second to approve that consent agendas as presented in a discussion.
Counselor Woods? Counselor Dagel? Counselor Whitaker? Counselor Smalley? Counselor Grousman? Counselor Hamilton? Mayor Sumner? Motion carries.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Diane Harris, City Recorder. The, the city received an application for our budget committee. We have two vacancies on there, both terms and on December 31st, 2025. And the application we received was from Richard Bennewait. And he is a resident for the city and has over 40 years of management and budgeting experience. He is at the meeting tonight via Zoom. So if he would like to.
Mr. Bennewait, would you like to introduce yourself?
He can do. Is it going to do that? There he is. Is he coming in?
Can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
More questions can I answer for you?
Would you like to tell us something about you, introduce yourself?
Sure, my, my background is primarily in medical imaging. I've worked in the hospital setting, in the outpatient imaging setting. I've managed physician practices. I was with Kaiser Permanente for about 10 years as their Director of Imaging Services for the Northwest Region. My budget with Kaiser was $52 million a year. We had several projects that were done under the, during that time, one was to convert the Northwest Region to digital imaging. We came in on that project, $5 million under budget and a year ahead of schedule. I am, I've been living in Sutherland now for about three years. And I just wanted to give you a reminder.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Woods? Counselor Dagel? Counselor Whitaker? Counselor Smalley? Counselor Grousman? Counselor Hamilton? Mayor Sumner? Motion carries.
Welcome to the budget committee.
I will be in contact with you tomorrow and also pass your contact information off to our finance director, so she can keep in touch with you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under ordinance 1091, amending FMC Chapter 2.32 Urban Renewal Agency, Section 2.32.030, Elections of Officers, and 2.32.060 Quorum Rules, Regulations, and Procedures, Second Reading and Adoption.
Ordinance 1091, an ordinance amending Chapter 2.32 Sutherland Urban Renewal Agency, Sections 2.32.030, Election of Officers, and 2.32.060 Quorum Rules, Regulations, and Procedures of the Sutherland Municipal Code.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Deputy City Recorder Melanie Masterfield. This is a follow-up from the March 13th council meeting. Staff is asking for approval and adoption of this ordinance. We were adjusting Sections 2.32.030, Election of Officers, to determine length needed for Chair and Vice Chair. And also Section 2.32.060 Quorum. It was listed that special meetings needed to be noticed three hours and per Oregon Public Meeting Law is actually 24 hours. So with those verbiage changes, we're going to ask if you guys would adopt this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1091. The motion and second to approve ordinance 1091, amending FMC Chapter 2.32 Urban Renewal Agency as presented in a discussion.
Counselor Woods? Counselor Dagel? Counselor Whitaker? Counselor Smalley? Counselor Grousman? Counselor Hamilton? Mayor Sumner? Motion carries.
Under purchase, approval, solar beam mixer for Cooper Creek Reservoir.
Counselor, there it's one public works. I invited Tyler Volator from the Dyer Partnership to talk about the solar beam mixer and why we need it. And he has a presentation.
Just for you. Mayor and Council, good evening. My name is Tyler Wolter, we're the next mayor of Star Harbor.
Is that better?
Go to the screen.
There we go. So yeah, here to give a great presentation on the increased essentially with the stratification that occurs in Cooper Creek during late summer, early fall, the city's forced to effectively shut down the water creek plant because of credibility issues with the raw water. And so effectively, multiple solutions were evaluated and solution that recommended was a mixing system for Cooper Creek Reservoir. So a little bit of background, so the raw water, as you know, with Cooper Creek Water Treatment Plant is the raw Cooper Creek Reservoir. The reservoir stratified during the late summer, early fall. You essentially have the warmer water at the upper layers of the reservoir and the cooler dense water at the lower levels of the reservoir. Intake is at the lower level of the reservoir, about 38 feet deep. And essentially, once the lake stratifies, it's effectively very difficult for the water to treat. Next slide. So the intake, like I said, is about 30 feet, 30, 38 feet off the water level at the top. High levels of manganese, iron, hydrogen sulfide, they will become present in the water in the late summertime period, again, because of the stratification that occurs in late summer. And this, like I said, essentially forces the city shut off fire results and slide. But this is a graph of the manganese, as you can see, the raw water manganese typically in the wintertime is, is less than 0.5. And then as you approach July, August, September, October, November, it steadily increases and results in very high chemical costs as well as a lot of erratic type influent water quality that's really unstable to treat. So next slide. So the Dyer Partnership evaluated several different options, a couple of which are already being implemented. And those are the process, nice limitation, the real-time nice limitation probes. The city's also modifying, upgrading their chemical feed systems. And we looked at different types of mixing and aeration systems as well as multi-level intake and then pre-treatment options at water treatment plant itself. Next slide. So the hypolymnetic circulation is basically their mixers, mass circulating mixers that are installed in the reservoir. The intake to the mixer is typically located about two feet lower in the intake to the water treatment plant. And essentially what you're doing is circulating the, the water in the reservoir to take the, the water with high dissolved oxygen concentration and displace the water in the bottom that has very low DO. And so that essentially prevents your manganese and iron and whatnot from entering into the, to the water column. So it reduces or eliminates the temporary manganese at fall turnover. Next slide. This is a section view of the, what the mixer would look like. So the draft two would extend approximately 40 feet into the reservoir. And then it essentially mass circulates the water through the reservoir constantly. It's a solar powered floating unit, is a fractional horsepower DC direct drive motor. Next slide. So the two units would be installed near the dam. Again, they're, they're floating, solar powered, 36-inch diameter intake. Those and then local answering systems to prevent them from, from moving. So they're approximately 16, 17 feet in diameter. They have little flags for location identification and such. So the rental option, which we recommend upfront, it's a, it's essentially a pilot study just to confirm that, that the product performs as advertised. The rental option is approximately $44,000 and then the direct purchase option is $134,000. Next slide. There's been a number of installations for algae control, manganese control, iron control. Lots of different examples throughout the United States. The, the two installations in Georgia were installed in similar type applications where there's a lot of stratification in the reservoir. Raw water manganese before and after the mixers were installed for those two Georgia installations was approximately one to three for raw water. And then post-installation, they're less than 0.5. So and those particular installations were installed in 2004, 2005. With that, any questions or comments?
The rentals from six months in the summer, is it taken out after the summer and then reinstalled next year? What happened to it?
Yeah, typically they would remain installed and in operation year-round. They're very low-cost operate and
in service year-round and
That's correct.
Losers' stock will be the damage. They're pretty busy.
We're not sure, they're going to be very visible. Hopefully nobody runs into them. We may have to rope off or buoy off an area, but currently we don't plan to do that because they're big and, and visible and have flags, like he said, so we're open to be crashes and talk.
Would there be an additional six months rental of $4,000 to rent over the six months? Or would that point it would just be out from the project?
Yeah, so the time period, the city typically has difficulty treating the raw waters typically September, time for August, September. And so the six-month rental agreement would get the city through that difficult time period. And by the time that that is, is over, then the city would understand that it was successful and they could move towards a direct purchase.
And $12,000 that goes towards the purchase?
That's correct.
Do you have ideas of cost saving over what's it, monitoring the chemicals?
But yeah, so that's, well, the city can't treat the raw But yeah, so that's well, the city can't treat the raw water or wire. And the course to turn the planet off. And that's because the. During that time period, the lake stratified, but then also there's pockets of anoxic water. And so the. The influence water quality that's that's directed to the plant is very unstable. Which we're trying to counteract that with process instrumentation, but it's really just. You can pour the chemicals to it, but operationally it's just very, very difficult to to do. So it's. It's not, it's not really an option to just tackle chemicals.
What's what's the city been doing up to this point to to pre-process?
Like you said, we we monitor that raw and we turn it off when it gets to early September. Every year.
Every year or like the entire month or a day?
For the rest of the year, we go back to just non- growl. That's our hope. We, you know, we still have limitations with our acre footage. But our hope is that if need be, we can run that plant through the fall and. Till whenever our 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 demand drops, you know, in the summer, we're at two million gallons a day that we need and. Not growl has trouble keeping up with that. So. We'd like to be able to do that. And and to answer your question, Gary, some, there will be considerable chemical savings. We don't know what that is. We haven't. We can't know until we have this six month trial period. And then it might become more evident, you know, an actual dollar amount. But I I suspect there'll be considerable savings. Absolutely. Back to that period. Yeah.
I have one more question. So Cooper Creek is its responsibility of.
Itself. Cooper Creek is owned by its own water control district. And the county, Douglas County has control of the park. System there and the the boat launch and boat ramps and that sort of thing. Some of the water control district actually owns. I I don't believe we could, yeah, we can call on them to. You mean if there was damage to a via boat or something? Can't speak to that exactly. We can definitely try to find that out.
Location of the units relatively close to the dam, right next to the intake, more than intake about the dam as well. So. It is in pretty close proximity to the shore itself.
That's my one concern is right along that dam, a lot of people. Fish right off of that dam and it was then it cut off that area pretty much for any fishing.
I think that gets. You know, I mean, I.
They show them pretty good size, but. So how is it in terms of, you know, you've got people up there swimming and things like that? As far as safety goes, is there, is is it safe to be around? Is it, I mean, is it going to suck anyone in?
It's it's fractional horsepower through the flow rate that goes through the the unit is relatively small in comparison to the. The overall induced flow rate that is caused by the unit. Oh, yeah.
They go in right up just by the dam.
Notice that. We can rent this thing for forty four thousand dollars for six months. Or we could rent it for fifty five thousand dollars for twelve months. Wouldn't that be a better deal?
Well, at the at the conclusion of the six month rental, you're going to understand what the the impacts will be. To the raw water quality and we can extend the six month rental to. To twelve months if needed, but. Yeah, we don't, you don't need the twelve month.
This time your manganese isn't an issue. So.
One of the things that helped to prevent the. Lake, right?
That's correct. Yeah, a lot of the installations for solar be. Are just for algae, not manganese or or iron control as well as to. Circuit the water and. If it does off oxygen present throughout.
Water safer than.
When we remove the overall water quality of the land. Right. And that's where the pilot study comes into play, but everything slopes down towards the 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 dam. So as you create circulation at the deepest location, you are going to. Circulate a wider area, but in some of the upper reaches. You're obviously not going to have as much circulation as the. Yeah, and we're mainly focused on the area around the dam where the intake is.
Aaron, that's not something that what does it run year round or just?
It will, we won't pull it, it'll just run. I don't know that there's any benefit to pull that out and maybe to service it once in a great while. I I really don't. Not sure about.
Yeah, but he haven't said it, so I'm going to. The important piece of this is not only saving. But the plant now can continue to operate if you remember when the drought conditions. Cause the water was so bad at Cooper Creek, we couldn't draw down to it and now Corral was non-function. And so this now gives us that cushion, always have that assurance of supply even in our lowest months. And, you know, we aren't really the algae protectors of the lake, but where it is is going to. Cut down the the chemicals. And the reason we went with six months is because at the end of six months. If it's not effective and not working, which is the height, then they'll remove it and we go to a. A plan B, but we're very confident this will work. Yes, Aaron and his crew are going to have large fans. And just stir.
Give him a wooden spoon.
Does what the water control district, do they consider anything at all to that or is it just probably?
They were gracious enough to not. Fight us on. They're they're really good. Nope, it won't benefit them per se. And so, you know, it's on, it's on us. And then Lisa, there are other plans. We have, you know, that movable intake or the pre-treatment. Those are very costly. This is the least expensive option if it works, which we hope, but think that it will.
I'd like to say one thing real quick. So one thing that we do know for a fact is the water quality could creep reservoir just continues to get worse. So this pilot study is going to identify and see if it's going to make that quality better. So those six months, these guys are right. August, September are worst months we have. So hopefully that pilot study says, yes, it's working. Our manganese is dropping, hydrogen sulfide is dropping. And chemicals are less usage and we save as much. So and we can treat all.
Yeah, water is able to handle some factors. I've been. Checking the budget, we'll be able to carry it from May and June, send the current budget and I will budget for the. Following year as well.
Would be beneficial if they were one of the other end as well or?
Counselor Woods. Counselor Dagel. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grousman. Counselor Hamilton. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
Well, I plan to have Wayne here. We have a homeless response team in general. Oh, wake up Wayne.
I think Jerry needs to wake up. Wake up Jerry.
You see that I texted you and said, where are you?
No.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
I came from right from the gym. I didn't even know I was supposed to be here. So that's perfect. Well, my name is Wayne Ellsworth and I am the president of Uncle Heart and I live at three five five. So what we're looking for is just an update then?
Yeah, well, you told us last Friday it was good news.
Oh, okay. I gotta remember what I told you last Friday. Okay, so. Just as an update, I'll start from the beginning. Currently, we have about thirty one people staying at Hastings Village. As you can see, for the people that haven't been here before, and I wanted to comment on your comments before. I agree with you and I'd like to talk to you afterwards about some of those things because just like the city manager said. If there's any kind of theft or anything like that, that is unacceptable behavior, we'll definitely take care of it. The people that do reside. At Hastings Village are taking up more of a, more of an active approach that those things don't happen because they do have a built in council. That looks after those kinds of things and make sure that they don't happen. So I'll make sure to talk to you about it so we can exchange phone numbers and that. So like I said, currently we have about thirty one people that are residing over there and like, like Jerry said. About the Hawthorne property, we're looking at different means when it comes to. Not necessarily low income housing, but appropriate housing, housing that people. I guess need in order to be self-sufficient. And it just so happens that. A lot of the people that we are working with and the people that are experiencing extreme poverty or getting to. A point where they potentially could become homeless, aren't making enough money to be able to. Afford modern day apartments, even RV rental spaces with RVs and, you know, traditional. Brick and stick homes. I mean, that's just, that's just what it is. Currently, we have about twelve people out of the thirty one that are in a spot that would be able to afford. Four hundred dollars a month rent. You know, back in the day, when my first year of college, my first apartment was about two hundred dollars. I can see through the walls, but it it definitely made its point. We we were warm anyway. But that's why you can see, we're we're trying different step models. To be able to prepare us to be able to provide the things that we promised when it came to our program. And the idea was to make sure that people were at least warm, fed and dry. And how we were able to do that is the city and the county got us a chunk of land that we were able to put people. And put them in tents. We need to do create a step model. Well, until funding was available, which. To clarify what what Jerry said before, there are a lot of grants that the city has applied for. Okay, there's a lot of grants that we have applied for through Uncle Heart. We've only been able to get one of them so far and it's for a hundred thousand dollars through Uncle Health Plans. And they gave us fifty thousand dollars off the bat. And what we were to do with that fifty thousand dollars is set up our phase two. So the phase, the phase model is just like what Jerry said with the step approach. So we give a place where people can be in just a tent. Those people that don't want to live in that kind of environment, that want to be out of that environment, what we are. To do to help them is to create a system of care program, a coordinated care program, program of care, however you want to say it. To be able to create self-sufficiency based on individual needs. So in order to do that, we have to be able to provide something that. A person could get to that next step. And what we were are going to be using is what's called micro shelters or how Jerry calls it is a chew. A contained housing unit. It's a military based kind of initiative where you give four walls and a roof. Electricity so people can make sure that they can charge a phone. Maybe have heating and cooling and so they can, like I said, stay warm, fed and dry. Make sure they can get to their telehealth appointments or behavioral health appointments. And surround all of the local organizations around them so they can be helpful and kind to the folks. Currently, we have about fourteen different organizations partnered to offer these services, whether it be adapted integrated health. HIV Alliance, you can, Uncle Health Alliance. Worksource Douglas, Easter Seals, the list just goes on and on. Peace at Home Advocacy, there's just, there's so many people that. Are partnered with us because they believe in what we're doing. Once we get that micro shelter piece, which we're going to be doing it out of containers. So the containers have been partially paid for because I don't have all the money to pay for it. But we 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 paid for currently three forty foot storage containers that have been converted into. Three eight by twelve apartments apiece. Those are for people that are in their integrated health model, coordinated care model, program of care, whatever you want to call it. And what we're going to be doing is surrounding all the organizations into those folks to help them transition as fast as possible. So for the folks that haven't been here before and listening about the story. We started this village in November of twenty twenty one around Thanksgiving time. And I don't have, of course, I just came from the gym, so I don't have my numbers. But just from that November of twenty twenty one to November of twenty twenty two. We were able to have over a hundred people come through that model and over fifty of them transition out of it into alternative living situations. So that's why Jerry has been working so hard and Pat has been working so hard in different areas, different towns. With the League of Oregon Cities because we have a model that is actually showing results. And we're, I'm I'm very proud of it. The board is very proud of it. And I'm hoping that the city is proud of what they've been able to help us create because it has been an awesome model. But going into our next steps, our next steps, like I said, is developing the micro shelter model. And I'm hoping to be able to get enough grant funding where we can pay for these. Because like Jerry said before, we don't have much money that we've been using. We've been doing this all on. From the Uncle Heart standpoint, we did everything in the last year, year and a half off of nine grand. Not a lot of dollars and the city hasn't received any extra fundage to be able to help with these kind of things. And when it comes to like. Eugene, Portland, Salem, all those other big towns, they've been throwing millions at this and we've just been pretty much helpful and kind. We want to make sure that when we get these shelters and that we get people transit transition into them. As fast as we can. And then all of those yellow carports will start coming down because that's what they were intended for purchasing in the first place. Was making sure that people were in that next step model. We just didn't have the money to buy the cool stuff. We had to use what we had. So we went to Costco and bought. Carports that are ten by twenty and it's been working out pretty good so far. Then the next, once we get funding from our state. Our extra allowances from Uncle Health Alliance and potentially the federal government, then we're going to start working on our third phase. Which is going to be the low income housing model. And our. Whole Uncle Heart model with the city will look like this. We have to be able to establish a centralized location that we are planning on in Roseburg on Diamond Lake Boulevard. But until we can get the other cities on board, which has been. An obstacle. We've been, we've been working really, really hard and I work with local police departments throughout the county. And it's just been a very, very hard struggle to get other folks on board. But we were looking at that Hawthorne property because of the church. To be able to have some sort of facility where we would be able to. Have a location for Uncle Heart to do its peer support, case management, our. Our group sessions and possibly some therapy. We're looking to possibly have. Actually, two different primary care offices that have behavioral health and substance use. Come in and help folks that are suffering from those ailments. And to really develop the people. Plus, it has about twelve bedrooms and eight bathrooms. That we might be able to help out the seventy three homeless children in Sutherland that are currently in Sutherland. We can actually meet the need almost a hundred percent on homelessness with the available things that we have right here in town. Which is something that no one else can touch, which is pretty darn amazing. So we're hoping we met with Virgil Osborne. Virgil Osborne was very impressed with what we were doing and we've been in contact with the county this whole process. Talking to Senator Merkley and Senator Wyden. It looks like we're having good luck with our our local politicians as far as that can go. So I'm just looking hopefully for the future. So I'm just looking forward for the future, and we're going to continue to do the best that we can. Another update, though, is like Jerry said before too, because he took everything that I would have said anyway.
I didn't say you're lying.
I know. We are actually going to implement security. It's going to be more than likely to start out because of the lack of funding. It's going to start out with making sure that our overnight hours are staffed because what that's going to do is, for one, it's going to help out with peace of mind around the area, local, you know, people that live around that area. But it's also going to take a lot of stress off our local law enforcement. Because when you police homelessness, it gives the wrong signals. And our police department has been amazing at just being there to be helpful, and I, I look at them more as like resource brokers than police officers nowadays because when we call, they are there and they have a helpful mindset every time they come there. So I'm very proud to be part of this town that has a police department that's willing to take those extra steps. Another thing, because of, you know, how the police department has been trained, the fire department has been trained, and the resources that we've brought in, we can actually say something that a lot of towns can't say in Douglas County where we've only had two potential overdoses in our homeless community. In Roseburg, there were around twenty-nine a week. So we're actually helping folks get past that point by having the right resources in place. So there's so many good things to talk about, and I was not ready to say any of them. So thank you, Jerry, for your late text, but does anybody have any updates or any kind of questions for me?
One of the questions people are always asking, like, if we have a wonderful place to keep our kids alive, how do we control returns because of what everybody?
Oh, absolutely. That's a great question. So far, we've been really, really good at when somebody comes into the area from another place. We've had families, a family of six from Coos Bay. We've had people come in from Cresswell. We've had people come in from Coos Bay. I mean, just people. What our group does over there is they set them up with a tent, a tarp, and a sleeping bag, and they say Wayne's going to come talk to you tomorrow. They send me a text, and what I do is I make sure to put all of the people in place to get them where they have to go. And usually in those situations, we are able to use local resources like Samaritan in or the mission to be able to help people because I mean, to be honest, which I always try to do, a lot of our local folks don't use the Samaritan and the mission because of whatever kind of stigma is associated with why they can't go or rules or sleeping with sex offender, whatever. I hear it every day. Those folks haven't heard those yet. So we've been able to help out a lot with that, and sometimes when the people are coming in, they're just going to another town. So we'll circle around with Salvation Army or or other folks, maybe UHA or, or other folks that help out sometimes with bus passes or else different kinds of transportation, and we get them to where they have to go. And we actually are very blessed, and, and I I work for Adapt, full disclosure. We're very blessed because we have a peer support program now that has about ten or twelve peer support specialists that have amazing transportation regulations, so we can actually bring people to where they need to be, and we can set them up with the resources where they're at. So it's not like people are staying here long-term. We have currently at the village, we have one person from Yaw Kala that was, I guess, in a domestic situation. But we're definitely helping with that person to transition also, but we haven't had people staying there for the long term from other towns. Not yet. I don't see it happening, but I can't promise that. So I promised that before, and I got trouble.
Well, don't you have rules as to how long someone can stay?
That's, that's kind of like the beauty and the curse both of the situation because having a low-barrier situation like that to follow the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, you can't have a term on. So we do have people there out of the original six that came in that, not this last November, but the one before. We still have three people that are there because they're hard cases. I mean, to be honest, and this isn't just for you guys, for you guys too, there are people that I deal with on a daily basis that got a sex offender charge thirty, thirty-five years ago. Those things don't go away, and, you know, no matter what you know, people's biases are when it comes to those kind of things, to help somebody with that that happened so long ago, no matter what it could be, it's so hard to find that person a place. It's so hard to find that person a job. It's so hard to find any, anything for, you know, some folks that have hangups in the past. So what we're trying to do our best, and we're doing it very, very well, and along with all these other agencies, is making sure that every option that can be on the table is on the table so we can help them, you know, transition as fast as possible.
Are there any rules or regulations in terms of, 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 do we?
Absolutely not right now because the reason being, and again, with the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, it has to be a low-barrier initiative, low barrier meaning that having any kind of sobriety measures associated doesn't create a low-barrier solution. Now, I said that out loud. On the other half, if the city was to make it so drugs and alcohol are not allowed on the property, the city has the ability to do that. It just can't be it can't be part of the rules that you have to be clean and sober to stay. So if the city was to say, no drugs, no alcohol on the premises, you guys can do that. However, with what we're doing so far, it seems to be working. And we have had a couple people in the past, and I'm not saying a lot. We're probably saying maybe to the three to the four range where I felt uncomfortable picking up needles. I felt uncomfortable, and I'm around them all day. But there's not a lot. There really isn't. And when it comes to drinking, yes. Yes, a lot of people like to, like to drink, it's up to them. But like I said, I've, I've told you from the beginning, I'll always be honest with you. You guys have the right to put a prohibition on that. However, right now, I believe what we're doing is working.
But if we were to put a prohibition on, then most people just couldn't stay there, so they'd go sleep in the park.
So not necessarily, but you're, you're on the right track. So we offer a place where people can be if they don't choose to be there, then we have the right to police it. Is that correct? Yes. So if you were to put that stipulation on there, yes, you could do that, and if they chose not to stay there and they chose to sleep in one of our parks or in someone's backyard or in someone's business, you could absolutely police that. But like I said, what we're doing right now is working, and I apologize for your guys' area because I didn't hear about that before. So we're definitely going to have talks on that. But from what I see on the other side of town, I see more people walking and running later and earlier in the morning. I see more people, and my, my kid is a he's a sixteen-year-old, just loudmouth teenager, and he plays basketball with his friends till ten o'clock at night at the park. I don't know if that's legal. I'll, I'll ask you about that, but. The overall thing, you know, the feeling that I get going around town is it feels safer. It feels like a community. It feels like everybody's helpful. And I can't tell you how many different organizations, businesses, even, even the chamber, you know, coming together, the churches coming together to be able to help in this has just been just heartwarming, amazing, so. Yes.
All right, so this, this, this is the beginning. When, when was that?
It was about November of twenty twenty-one. It was.
And there was originally six people in the camp?
Yeah, the original six people were positioned on Sixth and the, is ninety-nine going to Oakland originally? That didn't work. That was really loud, and a lot of people were angry.
And so now we have, we have twenty twenty-three, and we have thirty-one that we don't have.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there was a lot more than six, and we had just transitioned to it. Those are the six that we found. Then the, the others came and tried to, there was at least another ten that we had to kind of usher over there because they were coming out of the it took a while for them to come out of the windward. So it doesn't mean they were just initially only six.
Yeah.
There was about ten, maybe twelve others. They still had, we had, like, gotten them where they're supposed to be.
Conversations that I've had with people that are staying are Hastings. They believe that there's another forty people on the streets in Sutherland. And that's not including, like, all of the people that are doubled and tripled up and that, living in RVs in people's yards and, and living in people's chicken coops that have been hollowed out, and there's a lot going on behind the scenes that we just don't see. And fortunately for us, since we've done our due diligence and we've we've planned ahead, we can be put in a position where if people do enter into houselessness episodic, we can, we can actually like intervene with that person in a very timely manner so they don't have to have an extended stay out on the streets, and we're very hopeful about that. As of right now, I wanted to say that we were at eighteen. That was the first lie that I told. I said, I promise that we would not have more than eighteen, and I didn't know what Sutherland needed. I mean, I, most of my outreach was in Roseburg to Glendale, and I was on the fire department for five years here. I seen a lot of stuff, doing calls. But I didn't know that we had so many people that were experiencing houselessness and how many people were on the cusp of it. So that was my fault for saying that number. So I can tell you, though, that spring is coming. You know, there's going to be more people that are going to be out on the street, and plus, like our mayor knows with, with DHS, there's a lot of SNAP benefits that just got taken away. There's a lot of housing subsidies that just got taken away. So we have no idea what this is going to look like in the next six, eight months.
Is there, the, the residents that move around the area, they can expect to see, you know, a hundred people in that facility or two hundred people in the facility? Is there a capacity limit to what you would like?
I, I would like to say that with the services that I am able to provide with the other organizations, we should be able to help up to thirty-five people. We were at forty-six at one time, and that was scary. I remember we talked about that. We didn't have enough to be able to help the people appropriately. So I would like to say thirty-five would be appropriate. So you can absolutely fit more, but I, I don't know if I can handle it.
So is there a capacity for your organization, just in terms of the help that they would be needing? Is there a balance?
Yes, I believe at thirty-five, we can meet the need out there specifically at Hastings. But I'm not, I can't put a cap on it. That's up to you guys. It's your guys' property. I just try to help out wherever I can. Any other questions? Okay, I apologize for my attire.
Okay, on to workshop.
So, Madam Mayor, I brought the team together, just, just real quick overview, you know, Brian has issued his retirement.
Yes.
And so we begin the transition and training program to Christian to move into his spot.
Yeah.
And just so you know, so did Diane. I'm, I'm such a tyrant. I'm just running my life. And so we've got an internal system of calling up to hers, and then Melanie here will be the full-time full-scale city recorder right now. She's deputy, so we're moving on that. So what I asked Chrissy to do is serve in her role as a department head and facilitate this discussion.
Hi, I'm the new kid. So I actually will start with Jamie and Brian tonight on this discussion and kind of coming up. So we just have some little bit of discussion have to say, and then go through, and Jamie will identify the options, and we'll kind of discuss those further, so.
So Brian Elliott, Community Development. I'm just going to start off. So city staff went out on April third and did a survey basically from Umatilla East to the city limits, north and south. And it was estimated about a hundred and twenty RVs that they could see either in the front yard side, back of the house. And out of that, we estimated about half of them were people that could be occupying them, and what that criteria was, if, if that RV was set up, had stabilizers out, had power, water hooked up to it, had the slide out, and the steps were accessible, so just one, you guys to have an idea. That wasn't the whole city, but again, that was just east of Umatilla to the city limits. And roughly about a hundred and twenty RVs, maybe potential sixty. Was potentially sixty only being occupied, and again, the criteria that was identified was was a slide out, out, push power to them, with water to them, with the step to out.
So Jamie Chartier, Community Developments. So what we have before you on the screen in follow-up to February's council meeting and the information, the definition, kind of a poll of what other jurisdictions around Douglas County is doing, what from cities around the state are doing. We kind of gave you these options in February. We're just kind of coming back to you identifying the five options that we see. Number one, move forward with allowing recreational vehicles to be occupied temporary housing, and by temporary, you know, kind of like Springfield's doing. Springfield set out a pretty well-guided line of what can and can't happen. And they will be revisiting their guidelines this year. I mean, it was kind of a six-month temporary after the fires. But part of that would include, you know, our planning commission being involved, having a workshop. We would be doing the public outreach that could involve, you know, information, city bulletin, it could be on our website, our Facebook page, open houses to invite all the public to kind of get answers, give us their feedback, you know, a survey. Then we would come back to you with that information for a workshop and then move forward with the resolution with those guidelines. Number two, which these were outlined in February's staff report as well, would be a legislative amendment to our local ordinance to permit RV occupancy. And with that, we would be enacting time, place, and manner restrictions to be placed inside of the settlement development code. Again, those same steps would take place with any legislative amendment. Those are required. Number three, direct staff to move forward with a proposed ordinance to amend the municipal code to prohibit the occupancy of an RV. Right now, it's not set in stone in the municipal code, so talking to the attorney, Chad Jacobs, back in February, if you guys move in that direction, he recommended putting that ordinance in the municipal code. Number four, take no action, continue not to permit RV occupancy as identified in the development code. That's what our current code right now says. Number five, code enforcement, enforcing the existing rules and regulations outlined within municipal code and settlement development code. So either, if you guys want, being proactive people, and what was kind of talked about in February and maybe in December's council meeting, was, you know, going around and evaluating each circumstance, you know, kind of having a list of criteria. But again, whose criteria and whose opinion is that left up to? And plus, having the staff to do that. So from here, I guess we would like, you know, to get your guys' feedback, you guys need to either ask us questions or give us some direction of what you'd like to see.
Tell me what the difference, what our code says now and in having an ordinance to, what, what's the difference?
So right now, Chad, correct me if I'm wrong. Our municipal code doesn't really speak of it. There are parts of the municipal code, like connecting to a sewer. If you connect to the top sewer, that's actually prohibited within the city limits. Whereas the settlement development code, we, in our definition for an RV, it is considered a temporary resident, not a residential feature, you know, and it doesn't meet all the development standards that we outline for a single-family building. So in turn, it's prohibited within the settlement development code. So it's kind of not black and white. So that's where it gets kind of, where Chad recommended it being, you know, an ornament.
There's a statewide, there was some hospital, twenty-eight, ninety-nine, there was a twenty, twenty-one. Or they actually maybe a lot of these can commercial to understand, like, what's that?
And you can. So if you're in a manufactured home park, you go through that approval, and you could look at some of the manufactured home parks we have now, like take Owensville Home Park and South Palm Stock. When that went through that approval, they had designated They had designated spots specifically for RVs. So that is, yes, you're right, that option, which we do have.
But you're, you're speaking of a park.
So we are meeting the code, it's when you take a single-family. There's, you have your, your, yeah, your hookups, the way you're hooked up. Um, where an RV park that went through all the planning and building code requirements for those hookups. And through the permitting process and inspections, whereas if you were to take. Your house and I'm just gonna pull my trailer there and plug in, then have your propane that is probably too close, you just have an electrical cord that may not meet code. Um, I can't hook into your sewer, so I can't dump my waste. Um, so I mean, there is some different requirements, it's not really apples to apples.
When you were telling us about that state thing, yeah, but you said commercial property.
So an RV park is typically something that's permitted in your commercial zone where your. Uh manufactured home parks, formerly uh mobile home parks are your higher density residential. Because they're all on one lot accommodating X amount of square feet per dwelling.
I recommend that we even. Having a temporary uh allowance and that people have to um. Go and register and they have to follow regulations like um. Making sure they have a sewer hook in them, making sure they have a way to. And um. And then they have to follow any uh rules or regulations like it. Well, I, I don't know that, I think it's a good thing that someone can do it, commission can work on. With the rules and regulations that they have to follow, and they'll have to update it and maybe have a maximum time of three years.
We will, our staff.
Well, and so that's why opening the discussion to some of these, you know, everybody can kind of put their comments out there, we encourage everyone to kind of. Give some ideas, some conversations, so then we can take what kind of the consensus is in the end. Back to planning commission, we can start working out the details of whether it's a temporary permit or whether we want. Figure out, you know, what's need, what type of houses needed more, which is smaller dwelling unit, is it a. Different lot coverage, more accessory dwellings on a lot, what are we. You know, our development code, we did the housing analysis originally just to kind of see what our code, make sure we were complying with the state law. And we had some recommendations, we imposed those recommendations through the last vote amendment, maybe there's more that would help. Some of these scenarios, maybe it's a temporary permit to get us there.
And we might have limited, it's like only one on her property, so then. Um, and it has, you know, it has to follow these, these things, and that gives you. Something to go on if people aren't following, then you have the, the code to, to send the code enforcement officer out on to.
Maybe not health care of their wider own property and. It could be several.
You have hardship, right?
We have a hardship and we do have the accessory dwelling unit option in our code, so it is like you have your house, you can build. Stick built, updating her square foot accessory dwelling unit um. On your property, I mean, so we have that already in our.
This regulation states it has to be a family member.
Not for an accessory dwelling unit, but separate family hardships, yes. Well, for like if you're an industrial commercial, then we have the watchman's quarter, which then you have the manufactured home, but you still go through that approval for watchman's quarter, so we. After that as well. No, I'm arguing, that's a manufactured home is same as a single-family dwelling. And something that's been brought up previously, I believe, is also think of the liabilities. RVs are not built to the building code standards, so not to say they're not safe, they're not habitable, but for long-term. You know, we take those, but when I just use this one because an RV has propane tank literally on it. You're pulling it down the road, however, you have a propane tank that you're installing when you're building a house and it has to be X amount of feet away from the building. For fire purposes and whatnot, so knowing the longevity, what the city liability is. If this RV is approved to be on this property for X amount of time. Do we have that full time, let's put it in that, hey, you know, it's not been inspected and approved. To building code standards, so therefore, you're releasing the city of any liability. So taking not only the housing, you got to look at the city's safety and what's gonna protect the city. As far as if this RV starts on fire and if right next to a house, there's no separation. What is, what to say that we approved it, we're allowing it even because we knew it was theirs, like just seeing some of this. Or is there insurance cover?
So i- if I might, can we. Get a sense from you that you would be willing to consider a kind of a two-year. Uh RV uh time limit. Or some sort of rule, regulation or code built in that would allow up to two years. Uh for an RV uh under circumstances that we could work out with. Uh the planning commission or bring that back to you for consideration. And then you can argue the one or two years when we bring that back to you, but uh tha- that, that is. Really the lowest level issue right now, the highest level issue, you would dream. On the theoretical concept of something that would allow for a variant, so to speak. Uh, under special conditions and they would work uh with the planning commission. Uh and legal counsel and bring back. And in the meantime, you can be thinking of any other ideas and email. Uh Christie and say, hey, why don't you think about that, because uh there's issues of. Okay, utilities and hookups, how's that gonna be managed? Propane tanks, heat, how's that gonna be managed? Proof that there's an issue or a condition that warrants it for a period of time and then what that period of time might be.
What I would like to see, the emperor demand, is that we follow number three. And then have special circumstances, if there is, like Jerry saying. That we can allow it for three months or something on a temporary basis while they're getting. I, I really personally, I can see them going two years and then nobody informs you. I just, I just think that we just, we just keep having burden upon burden upon burden. Or staff, and pretty soon it's gonna cost more and more and more. If we're trying to draw this enforcement, enforcement score. Then you've got to ask and it requires them to come and. Have special circumstances.
It requires all the staff to go kick everybody out.
No, number three says you're, you're eliminated, there's no special circumstances to consider. You're telling us with number three, direct staff proposed an ordinance that would be built into our codified code. That prohibit RVs from being on anybody's property in the city. Right, that's what I meant, but. Then we're just circling right back around where they're hiding it in the backyard and we're just doing the same thing. Definitely you make out they're coming in that, what that is when. So if you wanted public input, you wanted a full council meeting, you're gonna get it.
Why don't we, why don't we do what Michelle suggested? And take these things and say, you know, what were, what are your opinion? You know, you might find the majority of the people out there that live with a cell phone, what are we gonna do about with people?
Yeah, and we do a community survey too. So in the meantime, we just stay the course and we're gonna move forward with getting as much community input as we can on this, right now.
Wait, what? The planning commission and keep you all apprised and then.
Properties that have RVs. Does it, those people who may directly be affected by any change in ordinance, what's their opinion?
Technically, at the moment, you're not supposed to be residing in one, so there wouldn't be an ordinance change. That would burden them, it would be following the rules that already exists. We wanna obviously use the most people, so if it's taking a survey and putting on the utility statements, plus the bulletin, the website. All avenues we can for open house, I mean, to me, that would be the best avenues to get, reach the most people we can. Cause it's not my opinion, it's not Brian, it's Andy and Larry's, it's as a whole.
You know, tell people that are breaking the rules, you know, the rules on living in their, their RVs. It will contribute to the homelessness, which is in essence an issue in itself, so I mean, what's the happy medium to keep people safe? And I'm happy with, you know, and keeping them to have the rights as well, because it's important if you're a homeowner, I mean, do you really have to be told? That you can, you can't, what you can and can't do on your own property, I mean, that's going with people's rights as well.
Nice water treatment plant, distribution lines.
So maybe part of it, we decide they have it, that includes. Uh devil charge for their sewer, extra for their water, whatever.
Yeah, cause somebody has something in the code now that. If they're not, if they're not hooked up to sewer. That they get charged, they have to be hooked up.
Yeah, so if you're to build a house and you're at three hundred feet of a main, you're required to hook up to that main, but if you do have an existing septic system in the city limits. Um, you can utilize that until, say, it does fails, then you would be required to hook up to that sewer main.
So you all okay with that? Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm really glad we were able to do this discussion. When you guys were pointing at number three, I was in, okay, we could do it, but I don't understand the story, right, number three. And last, we go and we talk to the community, like the group here, we're gonna meet with them, we're gonna talk with them before we go do anything on that property. And I think it's a great idea that we did time to go and tell the citizens, we're gonna do, we're looking at this.
I'm the councilwoman. Remember, monthly meeting time is limited, so if there's questions or mixed feelings that are likely presented to the group. Individual comments or questions that can be handled on a one-off level basis, if we have or if we have to be.
I think that's a really good conversation today, um, also. Is the, I guess this is an okay place to say this, but we're having an event for uh. Can I support, um, yet our business there. Need dabbies that don't, that are in place, where people can come and. Meet the canines in the area, so that's at five o'clock on April twentieth, um, the public's invited.
And I think that. Well, hey, we're going to show that. I think we need to, well, somebody has to warn the community what's going on, because. I have so many rulers from this people, and people don't know what's going on there, so a lot of questions, like.
Well, one of the tools we use is the emails and phone calls, you know, to just confirm. And I haven't received one in uh at least a year.
I apologize, we actually um hired some consultants. Out of Portland that are developing our educational pieces, they're supposed to be done by the end of the month, that I can take. That I can take and make sure that everybody sees the entire plan. And then you guys can use it, because, you know, you guys are a big part of this. You guys can use those educational pieces and, and pass it out to whatever your social media is and all that stuff through the city.
Does Unpo Hard have a website or a Facebook page or something like that?
Yeah, it's unpo hard dot org. And, uh, the face, Facebook page is under Unpo Hard.
You have information on that, that if we were to have a, our site, the city of Sutherland. Directed to that, they can pull information from your site.
Yeah, it would be pretty easy to do, probably. It all depends on if the city is willing to do that.
Just so one thing I want to really emphasize, we don't have a choice. Okay, we either allow them to sleep on our property right away, or provide them an alternative.
Uh, he's already gone, but I wanted to congratulate Officer Nelson.
That's all, guys.
I would like to say the same thing.
And Kyle on my list also, the one thing I want to say, um, as far as I can remember. He's only like the. Third, fourth maybe that's gotten that master officer. In the twenty-six years that I worked, is that right? So that's, that's pretty awesome to have. Um, I wanted to mention, and I think I saw a couple that was where I was at earlier, so I'm trying to take it some of ourselves. Stuff, but, uh, we had the. I'm called Wolfstock had an event tonight. Had an event at the community center and they had a terrific turnout tonight, and it was just, it was good to see. Jessica from the chamber, I thought she might be here tonight, she had fabulous week last week with travel Oregon open. Portland, and, um, she spoke and her class was one of my favorite ones, I guess. But, um, we, we thought it was a ball fire, like I came here now, and I'm so excited to have. She was gonna come and give us a report, so maybe she could do that next time, I know she was something. I was impressed and pleased, and I'm always proud of our league department, because, uh, Wyden's. Town hall last week, our presence was well-known there. You guys did a great job and it was good to see everybody there. I want to. Break a little bit about Jerry. Anyway, Jerry will be speaking at League of Oregon Cities on, is it next week? Um, specifically about homelessness, because of our model, they came to him to. Conflict about it, so that, that's pretty awesome. Then I want to congratulate Brian Darnian.
I live in the county.
It's quite a list.
Well, um, yes, I want to, uh, congratulate Officer Nelson and Chief Lane for your five years. And, uh, thanks Wayne for the great update on, uh. Uh, that was really outstanding information, I appreciate everything you've done. Uh, and yes, uh, I also want to say that Wolfstock Open House was. Very well attended, I was so surprised when I walked in there, the whole community center was packed.
Wow.
They did a great job, um. With a chef doing, uh, different things for the dogs and for people. We had a whole bunch of dogs, I guess last year they only had like three show up, this year there's probably fifteen or twenty dogs that. Uh, Hunter had to leave early because he was not the major. But it, it's really great, they have, you know. Huge board for Wolfstock and, uh, with a whole bunch of potential people. And they get a great organization. And, uh, yeah, the White, Wyden. And the Wyden, um, and Val Hoyle was a great turn in as well. And yes, I'm going to start, uh, coffee with the mayor on the first, uh, Saturday, uh. At Post Gallery, if anyone would like to show good, send a copy of the morning on Saturday. Uh, well, if a public comment, the purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. Time limit of three minutes per citizen shall clock.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Eugene Zichus, I am a resident of North Douglas County. And in seventeen seventy-five, a shot was fired that was heard around the world, starting the American Revolutionary War. A number of years later, we won our independence from a tyrannical ruler. And our freedoms and liberties were given to us. This was an unbelievable cost at this war. There is now, this day, a new internal war against the American people. This war is using energy, inflation, and a two-tiered justice system to rob every citizen of our rights and freedoms. All men and women in uniform and veterans gave some, but many gave all. To keep these freedoms, their lives shall not be lost in vain. Our current government is waging this war against us and we are losing. What can we, a small town in Oregon, you ask, do to change this situation? Like the shot fired so many years ago, you have the ability to make a very strong statement. This entire country, and you will wake up Americans, you see, you have a big, beautiful Old Glory flying next to I-5. Where tens of thousands of people a day see it. Many different people, not just the same travelers that go by. With a huge courageous gesture, you can become part of history. And with your Sutherland leading the way to be the first and most prominent in some field or action, I'm encouraged. You can achieve this by flying Old Glory upside down. Now, the meaning of this is the country is in dire distress. If you ask Siri about flying the flag upside down, what does that mean? She'll tell you, the country is in dire distress, now that's Siri. The one act will take off like wildfire up and down this freeway. And all across this country with many Americans flagging, flying their flags upside down. I am already flying mine upside down. The fact that you have changed the town slogan from Timber Town to Flag Town. And are flying that huge beautiful flag says that this community loves this country and our constitution. This simple patriotic gesture will cause many Americans to see what they can do as individuals. And how they can make a difference by flying their flags upside down and encouraging others to make a stand. No violence, no dis- dis- desecration, just a strong statement that we love our country. Now, there is no free lunch. And there's always a cost, from anonymity to notoriety instantly, your town will be inundated with media asking, what does this mean? TV, radio, newspapers, and internet social medias, all wanting a heads up. On this action say, yes, phone calls for a while, you will get them. A simple phrase can be printed and disseminated using on the phone. It says, Old Glory when flown upside down means this country is in dire distress. Thank you for your interest, have a great day, disconnect. Simple. I am sure you'll get many volunteers, of which I will be the first to volunteer and assist. This one act will bring Sutherland, Oregon into the national limelight. And many businesses will benefit due to this action, your brand new EV station, I'm sure. With all the cars coming in here that have electric vehicles will pick up dramatically. You will be the pebble dropped in the pond with a ripple effect hitting every corner of this great nation. Because of the courageous act you have done, I urge you to consider this action as soon as possible, because our nation is hurting. We've heard this tonight, our nation is hurting, homelessness, we have multitude of the things here tonight, we're discussing that. And we need to stand up and a military term is full of our. We are warriors of time and the time is nigh. God bless you and God bless this constitutional republic, the United States of America. And I have a couple of points, if you allow me for another thirty seconds, that might stave off some questions. One, this is apolitical, doesn't matter what side of the coin you're on. This is not illegal, because the US flag code says that it is illegal to. Desecrate the flag, burn it, rip it apart, stomp on it. But it does say that if you fly the flag upside down, it is a matter of disrespect. Except, there is an exception in that flag code, that if you use this to show danger or dire distress. And this country is in dire distress. Now, this war is going to affect you regardless of what you decide tonight. But your history will change from this time forward, and this nation's time of distress can be shortened by whenever action you take. And I don't know how this works with this council, and how soon you could decide on something, or however you decide, so. Every day, folks, don't stand a chance. And unless we have something we can do, we will surely fall as a nation. Everyone will suffer with no exceptions, and we have an opportunity right now to show our boldness and. Sutherland, the land of opportunity. And I was encouraged when I turned in my application to speak, and I read that, wow, then I read that tonight, wow. I like this town, and what you've done up and down Central to clean up this town, this is one great town. And so I'm encouraged, I'm hoping that you receive this in the manner that was given. And that we're able to do something, and I'm available to questions.
Are you going to other cities and asking them the same thing? You are the first. The reason is, I go to Roseburg a lot, because I love In-N-Out burgers. I've lived here for many years, my mother bought one. And I've been coming up and down this freeway since the middle eighties, and I love this flag. I'm hope, I'm hopeful every time I see it, so, yes, I will be, and I think with media. Being this and asking questions, that this will become a national movement. And in twenty twenty-two, the United States Supreme Court issued two rulings. Roe versus Wade and one on the Second Amendment, and they flew flags around Washington DC. It wasn't national, it was a local thing, but it doesn't matter what side of the spectrum you're on, they need to run straight. And so with your beautiful flag, with tens of thousands of people a day, they're gonna ask, why is that flying upside down? And with that short little form, we can take it to the businesses around the flag. So people will come and say, why is your flag upside? Here it is, just a short little phrase. And, uh, Laura, I believe it is, or somebody who answers your phones, will have just a little statement when she gets a call. And I'm willing to volunteer, and I'm sure there's others who will volunteer to be able to answer the phone and give that statement. And then say, thank you for calling. But yes, eventually, I am going to others, uh, but your flag was the best that I've seen, and it's close. And I like the attitude, so I came here first.
I mean, you think about it, and I would put it on the next council agenda.
So is that a month away? Can it be done any sooner? Okay, anything else? And my phone number, by the way, and email address, I think you all got a copy of this. It's on here for, if you need to get ahold of me for any reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Christine Nobby, and I live in the Timberbelly SKP Park. So I live in an RV, and I can, uh, pretty much, uh, tell you that these people that are living. Other places on other people's lots are probably not using their toilets. Uh, because you have to dump your toilet every two weeks at the minimum. Because if you don't, it's gonna come up and into your toilet. So you either have to move your, you either have to dump your RV, which. The hoses that go to your sewer are, are right beside your RV. And if you don't, you know, you have to connect it there, most of these people that I see that have them right on their properties. They don't have, you can't connect to a sewer, there's no place for you to connect to a sewer. So you either have to move the RV off the lot and take it to someplace to dump it, or you have to have somebody come and pump out your tank. Um, and people aren't doing, aren't having that done, so that's just for informational purposes. And also, in regard to Hastings Village, there is a Facebook page called Hastings Village. That they keep track, or they post things pretty, pretty much a couple of times a week. As to what the needs of the people there are as far as what you can donate. And there's people that take things, uh, you can drop things off at Visitor Center and leave them there. And they get picked up and taken down there on Tuesdays usually. Um, or you could leave them at the Seventh Day Adventist Church. No. Yes, and, um, they, they, uh, take them down there, usually is on Tuesdays. But they, they, she lists on there what the needs are currently for them. And, uh, you can converse back and forth with the, the person that takes those down there, and, uh, so it's very helpful, so. Let you know that.
Thank you. All right, this time we will adjourn.